Okay. Councilor, the regular meeting in the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 P.M. Thursday, September 5th. I'd like to welcome, we have some young men here from the Boy Scout troop at St. Pax. Welcome them, we always like to have young people come to our meetings. And I will start the meeting now with a moment of silence and pledges to the flag led by Councilperson Karen Nassar.
(Inaudible)
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Yeah.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. For those of you in the audience, if you don't know, their agenda's up here on the front few. If you'd like one, please come forward and get one. We typically have up to 30 minutes of time for public comment on non-agenda items, so at this time we would take a public comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. If you're here to speak on something on our agenda, you'll have an opportunity when that item comes up. So if there is anyone who'd like to make a statement, please state your name and your address.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street. Like I was telling one of the early councilmen that came here, it's getting harder and harder for me to come up and give speeches, not because there's nothing to talk about, but I've got to narrow down what I can talk about in three minutes, and then pick one of a dozen subjects to talk about. I think I'm going to make it broad this time, talk to the council and everybody here about one thing that I'd like to see an improvement on, from everybody. I keep saying there's 100,000 people in Vigo County, and I say that for a reason. I say that for basic fundamental math. There are 100,000 people living in Vigo County. There's over 65,000 people, and of that 100,000, living in Terre-Ho. Now, out of them people, I've been told by the Vigo County School Corporation and newspapers that there's not quite 15,000 of them under the age of 18 going to school. So that means out of 100,000 people, there's less than 15,000 of that 100,000 that's under 18 unable to vote. So, you know, it's 85,000 people should be registered to vote in Vigo County. In the city of Terre-Ho, gotta be close to 50,000. The last time we had an election, this spring, we had other registered voters, mind you. 13 percent of people bothered to vote. I don't care if you're a Democrat or Republican, if you're a member of this community, you need to vote. There's just no excuse for it. We're a democracy, and democracy depends upon people participating. And the easiest and simplest way to participate is to get registered to vote and then take time, twice a year, to go and vote. Once in the primary in May, and once in the fall. I just don't get it. I come to all these meetings, and I hear all the problems you're dealing with, debated, good, bad, or indifferent, I agree, I don't agree. By the way, I'll tell you right now, I probably get one or two items in a year going my way, the way I want it to go. All this time, I don't get it that way. And the reason I'm hearing from people talking to me that they don't want to vote is because, oh, their vote doesn't matter, nobody listens to them. I think the problem lies in that we, as a society, have fractured ourselves so much that we don't want to compromise. So you don't want to set a great grand plan, do something great, because, oh, they'll never get done. They don't even want to try. And therefore, I get to sit back and watch our community go from a city to a big town, and it's like we're trying to become a small town. And it's not because people are moving out, as much as people want to say that. There's not that many more people here, or less people here than there was 10, 15 years ago. What there is, is there's less commitment by the people that are here to do things as a group, be it Democrat and Republican, but more important than that, as citizens of the city of Terre-Ho. How many people volunteer for anything? I remember when I was growing up, my mother was divorced, we were poor. I felt an obligation to go to school, even though I had a lot of problems in school, simply because that was one thing I could do. As I got older, I could work at the Y, Boys Club, at different things, and I could work at different charities to help out. Again, it was what I could do. I could do that. It seems today that for some reason we've got a handle on volunteering, that we want to set the requirements on, oh, this group can volunteer, but this group can't. And we don't need their help, we don't need this help. And what you end up with is a community that sits around and says, oh, nobody needs my help or wants my help. Therefore, they don't try. Well, I don't know about that, and it's going to take a lot of work to correct that. However, I do know this, it starts with you doing one simple thing. If you're over the age of 18, and you're a citizen of Terre-Ho, Indiana, or Vigo County, register and vote, and then go to the meeting and decide who to vote for. And vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on non-agenda items?
Madam President, members of council, my name is Richard Shagley. And tonight I'm here, I think it's interesting to follow Mr. Hyde on this, tonight I'm here as a merit, as a Boy Scout merit belt counselor. I am here tonight with three young men who'd like to come up and introduce themselves. They're working on earning their merit badges for citizens of community and citizens of nation. And one of those requirements is to attend a government meeting. I gave the boys three choices, area plan last night, city council tonight, and city council next Thursday. I was hoping they'd all come either last night or tonight, so they don't get to see me next Thursday, if that goes south. But, you know, Don, I brought up some good comments about our future, and what we have here tonight is three young men who I feel confident that will be good citizens. They are good citizens, and they'll continue to be good citizens, and they will be an asset to our community. So gentlemen, you want to come up and introduce yourselves? A little heads up, that camera over there.
I'm Luke, Lucas Canal.
I'm Luke, Lucas Canal.
Welcome, Luke.
Thank you.
I'm Christopher Park. Hi.
Hi. Christopher, thanks for coming.
I'm Will Kenny.
Welcome, Will. We're glad you're all here.
Thank you.
And if you want to really see Mr. Shagley next week, you're welcome to come back.
It'll be on TV, so you don't have to.
That's right.
I would like to make one comment to Mr. Hyde. I'll guarantee you that nine of us will be voting this fall. Just I'd like to know that.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll proceed with the agenda. Are there any corrections to the journal of previous meetings?
There are none.
I don't see the mayor or any other communications from the mayor.
I did not receive any.
Any reports from city officials? I'd like to just say at this point, we have set our dates for the budget, for those of you in the audience, both here and on YouTube and TV, and our first meeting, considering the city budget for 2020, will be next week. I think all of those dates are on the website. The meeting next will be at 5:30, and it will just be a discussion of council with the mayor and anyone else in the city who we need to hear from. But you're welcome to be present and observe that meeting on the, I believe it's the 23rd, no, on the, I'm sorry, I don't have that date right in front of me.
16th.
16th, yes. On the 16th, which is a Monday, at 5:30, we will have a public hearing on the budget. And the budget is also available online on Gateway, so I just wanted to make that announcement. Any other reports from city officials? Any reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety?
I received them.
Okay. Any reports in standing committees? From non-standing committees? I don't believe so. Are there any items previously tabled for consideration?
There are none.
There are no tax abatements for confirmation?
Correct.
And we have no items on second reading?
Correct.
But we do on first reading, so next item?
Appropriation 15, 2019, $43,416.72 from overtime reimbursement, Terre-Ho Police Department, number 07510017, to Police General Fund, Route 12129.
Madam President, Council, Eddie Felling, city attorney. I believe you all received a memo from Steve Locker at the Terre Police Department. These are reimbursements that we received from Operation Pullover that we need to move cash into the general fund. I don't know what questions I can answer, but there's five or six of them we do a year, and it's a nice little added change to help cover some costs for the department.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on appropriation number 15? Please state your name and address.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street. I only have one comment on that. That's one of the few programs that they do right. I think that does serve the community, it helps keep the speed down, and people paying attention when they drive their cars. And I just wish people did a better job of watching themselves when they're driving their cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak on appropriation 15? Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I make a motion, we take action on appropriation 15, 2019.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Nassar, and seconded by Councilperson Aller, that we take action on appropriation 15, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then take action.
Madam President?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve appropriation 15, 2019.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Nassar, and seconded by Councilperson Aller, that we approve appropriation 15, 2019. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And so approved. Next item of business.
Special ordinance 20, 2019, rezoning of property located at 616, 621, and 702 North 14th Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation, and you have a copy of the recommendation in front of you.
Petitioners.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. My name is Jeff Llewellyn. I'm an attorney with the Wilkinson Gore Law Firm here in Terre-Ho. I am here this evening on behalf of the petitioner, Mental Health America, West Central Indiana Inc. They are a nonprofit corporation located here in Terre-Ho, Indiana. Also, participating in the presentation this evening with me is Mr. Jace Alsop, who is the Director of Development for the corporation. As well, there are certain board members here with us in support this evening. Mr. Cliff Lambert, you all know, is a member of the Board of Directors for this company as well. Mr. Paul Lockhart, a board member and treasurer, and Mr. Sean Reinhold, who is the board member and board president. So, we are here this evening seeking your consideration and hopefully action approval on rezoning of property located at 619, 621, and 702 North 14th Street. We do have some displays shown, I know you have a packet of information in front of you. Our petition, which includes a map of the property, but we do have it shown for you in display as well. The 619, 621 property address is at the southwest corner of 14th Street, intersecting with Chase. And the second lot, 702, is the northeast corner of that intersection. And actually, if you flip that map, north is up, so that's the direction I'm looking at. That's the way I, so thank you, Chase. So, those are the lots we're talking about. They're currently zoned R2, we're seeking an R3 zoning classification. The reason for the rezone is to allow for the construction of a tiny houses or tiny homes project on these lots. And you all may be well aware of what a tiny home is. I will admit to you, I was only moderately aware when I started involvement with this project. But it is, as the name implies, simply a smaller home, or house structure. In this case, as Jace is showing you, a diagram of one of the proposed options for the type or style of the home that we're talking about. They are intended to be approximately 11 feet by 32 feet in size, 530, or, excuse me, 350 square feet approximately. They are designed as one-occupant structures, so it is not a family or multi-individuals living in the home. These homes, much like any other home, are on a foundation or slab, they're set, they're affixed to the real estate. They will have utility service, like any other home, they have electric sewer and water utilities. So, you know, again, we're just talking about a smaller home. The reason for the R3 requirement, though, is because R1 is single-family, R2 is two-family, and our proposal, as you see, initially shows six homes on one of those lots, and potentially three to four on the other lot. So, the multiple occupants is why we require the R3. We kind of compare this project to something along the lines of a horizontal-type development, as opposed to, you consider a lot of, maybe the normal R3 is a high-rise apartment or efficiency units. These are going to be those apartment-type efficiency in size, but in individual structured units. So that's why the requirement for R3. We did receive a favorable recommendation last evening from the area plan commission. Prior to that, we received certain variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I believe in the report that you received from the plan commission, it indicates that there are certain matters, several in fact, that need to be completed, variances that need to be obtained, et cetera. Those variances have been obtained, and the requirements completed, down to the fact that we have not submitted a detailed survey yet, but obviously, that would come so that we would meet all building requirements and zoning requirements as necessary, when and if we get the approval for the rezoning and we start construction. And other than the, essentially, the size and parking variances that we received, we will meet all other setbacks or building space requirements, lot size requirements, et cetera. So, and the parking requirement really applied to the northeast 702 property, which, generally speaking, the requirement for these sized units are one parking place per unit, so we would need eight to 12 parking spaces. But the reality of it is, the reason behind this project is really to address a homelessness need within our community, and this is the purpose behind these type of projects across the country. And so, the reality is, the individual occupying the structure, the home, really doesn't have the wherewithal at this point to have a motor vehicle. So the parking spaces really aren't necessary. They travel mainly foot, bicycle, moped-type transportation, public bus transportation. So, the Board of Zoning Appeals did see fit to do away with the parking requirement on that northeast lot, which would allow us to develop three or four more tiny homes on that lot as well. So, and I do want to point out, with regard to the Board of Zoning Appeal process, we sent notices to 29 adjacent property owners advising them of this project and the variances that we were seeking. I will tell you, we got two responses positive in response. We had one individual who appeared at the meeting and had questions. I won't say she was objecting or opposing. She had concerns about the occupants and who they would be, and how that was determined. She liked the design of the buildings that we're looking at, and the idea of serving the homelessness within our community. So, beyond that, we got no other response, and no one else appeared at the meeting. And that's in addition to the public notice that we sent out, and as well then the notice from the area plan commission meetings, where no one appeared in opposition or otherwise, other than support for us. So, my point being, we have given quite a bit of notice to the public. They've had two opportunities prior to this evening to be here as well, so they are well-informed on this project, and we feel, at least in instance, there's stated support and otherwise no objection to what we're doing in the way of the rezone and the project itself. I do want to point out as well that this project is somewhat of a joint venture or collaboration with Indiana State University. We are working with the Department of Build Environment. Mr. Brent McDonald and Vice President Nancy Rogers are supporting this project, and so the drawings, elevations, floor plans that you saw being displayed here, were all prepared by Indiana State University students. We showed you a couple of different options for homes proposals, and those were designed by the Indiana State University students. They will be building the structures at Indiana State University, and then move them to this site, should it be approved, to be set on foundation. And we may have contractors involved at that point, but that decision's not been made yet. I can't say we're working with anyone specific in that regard. Again, these homes could be occupied by any individual, and I think I was talking to Councilman Garrison earlier, sometimes they're used in other parts of the country by retiring individuals who are downsizing, sometimes by students. In our instance, as Mental Health America, that agency or entity is really kind of driven by support, as the name indicates, serving mental health within our community, and individuals who are homeless are at a higher risk of mental health issues as well. And so, we can kind of address both issues at once by providing affordable housing and making arrangements for the homeless. And this entity has three other projects already that you may be aware of or familiar with, I'm not sure, but Liberty Village is a 30-unit apartment complex of one, two, and three bedrooms that serve low-income veterans and their families. Unity Village is a 30-unit complex of one-bedroom apartment for individuals with mental health illness, and they have Unity House, which is a 10-unit efficiency complex, again, to support individuals with mental health issues within the community. And so I tell you that in part because this project will be overseen by the same entity, so you're dealing with someone who is a known entity and a known quantity within our community, has committed themselves to our community, to mental health, wellness within our community, and to addressing homelessness within our community. So, the homes that would be put up in this instance will be owned by that one entity, they'll share common space and common usage area, but it will be owned and overseen by Mental Health America, who's experienced, obviously, in doing these kind of things. As I stated, there are other parts of the country, this type of project is growing in popularity and recognition throughout the country. I think it's kind of been a movement from the west to the east. I can cite you to two communities in Indiana only who have done this, Muncie and Indianapolis, that I'm aware of, Muncie being the first to have a tiny homes project. So, Terre-Ho has an opportunity to be kind of on a leading edge, if you will, in this instance, and I think that's something to be proud of as well. So, we would respectfully request your approval this evening. I'm going to turn to Jace for a moment and let him tell you a little bit more about the statistics of the homelessness that need for this project, and address a little bit of the criteria, the individual who appeared at area plan asking about who's going to be in these homes. Jace can address a little bit of how we decide who's going to be in these homes.
As Jeff mentioned, my name is Jace Alsop, the Director of Development at Mental Health America of West Central Indiana. And I just wanted to thank the council for giving us this opportunity, this great opportunity for some of the most vulnerable citizens here in our community. I just, I know most of you guys know a lot about our agency, but I'll just tell you a little bit about how we came about. Mental Health America, almost 50 years ago, came about because of a woman that had postpartum depression, and no one knew how to handle that. She was incarcerated, and then a couple weeks later, she died by suicide from pain herself. She took her own life. Since then, we've had numerous facilities brought up for mental health. The community has made mental health known, but that was how Mental Health of America became about. We've had a couple of different name changes. We went from Mental Health Association to Vigo County, and now we're in five different counties, including Vigo County, so we get to serve numerous citizens in different counties, which we think is great. Like I mentioned, we think this is a great opportunity for some of the most vulnerable citizens. This University of Southern Indiana did this study, if you guys pull out your statistics forms that I gave you in the packets. We found that in Indiana, supportive housing, that's permanent, provides so much cost savings to the community. If you look at inpatient medical within the state from permanent supportive housing, there's a 78 percent savings there from permanent supportive housing. With shelter, there's a 100 percent savings. With emergency services, there's 66 percent savings. With inpatient mental, there's 62 percent savings. Criminal justice, there's 83 percent savings. And outpatient medical, there's an increase of 336. So what that means is that they are not being inpatient anymore. So there's an increase for that outpatient. And again, with outpatient mental health, there's an increase to 165 percent because they no longer need to be inpatient. So with this project, the tiny home project, we think that it is a great opportunity for the community to help some of the most vulnerable citizens. As Jeff mentioned, we have been around for over 50 years and serving and being super mission-driven. We have a passion for the community that we do serve, and the people that we serve as well. We have three complexes, three facilities, where we have 70 units, and we've had over 200 residents in those units. And we think that this is a great opportunity to provide more housing. So within our three facilities that we have now, we have found a gap, because there's a, I'm sure you guys have heard of HUD before. HUD is the Housing and Urban Development. There's a scale that we follow to house individuals suffering from homelessness and doing that transition, and it goes by their mental illness, how long they've been chronically homeless. And we are mainly housing individuals that are in the high-level scales, because it's a 20-point scale, and we are housing from 14 to 19, is what we have found. I just counted, and we have over 45 applications that just have not been processed, because we don't have enough housing to house these individuals struggling from homelessness. And we think that having this tiny home project, this community, this great opportunity for our community, that it would be able to fill that gap that we are having. And it's a number between 6 to 13 that those individuals, those 45 applications that we just don't have housing for, because there's, you know, there's too many homeless individuals and just not enough support or housing. And we also have a partnering agency, Hamilton Center, to provide services, treatments to these individuals. They're just two blocks away if this tiny project, tiny home project will be implemented, so we can offer those services to these individuals to help them get back to being working citizens and have such a good quality of life. There's some numbers at the top of the statistic page, and it's actually higher than this, but this is some statistics that I found in Vigo County. There was 160- There was 164 total households that is experiencing homelessness and 201 total persons experiencing homelessness. But there was also a point and count number done in January of 2019 where I think there was 556 individuals that were found to be homeless as well. So we would love for the council to be on board with this awesome opportunity to provide housing to some of the most vulnerable citizens in our community. And if you guys have any questions, I would love to answer those for you. I also want to apologize about our Chief Executive Officer, Maya Wilkie. She would really want to be here, but she had prior obligations, so I'm speaking on her behalf.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So we wanted to give you a little background of why we're proposing this project. Again, it's a new project for Terre Haute, different, but it has a need and an entity who can meet and supply that need. And it can be done in an efficient and economic manner with our collaboration with the other agencies we've talked about. And we believe that this type of development does fit the characteristic of the neighborhood that it's in, that the new development and growth will be filling some empty lots that are otherwise maybe less attractive and a cost to our community and will add value and new growth to a neighborhood that will benefit from that. So again, we would respectfully request your approval of the rezone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 20, 2019?
My name is Donald Hyde of 1411 Poplar Street. The gentleman said that they'd get notice and I pay attention to notices sometimes, but that one slipped by me. First of all, let me state I am for what he generally says. However, I have some questions and I think they're valid questions. And again, it's not by who's there or anything at all. I'm just talking about build a house for a single individual person, a small house. Put another small house literally, I hope, a little bit away from the other houses so that the guy has a little room and doesn't feel too crowded, especially considering the fact I'm wanting to move in mentally disturbed people. I never heard you mention anywhere whether it was going to be somewhere for these people to sit out in the sunshine or have a step or a porch or in some way to come in contact with nature. I didn't hear you say that you picked this spot because it's really close to a grocery store or really close to a bus stop or they've got a way to get around. There is one way to have a home, and I have one. In my home, I have it where I got it because I walk across the street to a grocery store, walk down one block, get a pop, get gas in my car when I have a car. And I can get on my bike and I can write it down main sidewalk so I know where I'm at. You're planning on getting people that have never lived in that neighborhood before and putting them there. You should pre-plan certain things. Now, I'm not got anything against your thing, but maybe you might want to take a little time and think about a few basic questions.
Councilboard member, Mental Health America. One quick answer to Don Hyde's commentary. The folks, many of whom may reside in these homes, are currently residing in the same area, in a wooded area immediately adjacent to the trail. So the opportunity for these people to move from this wooded area at 14th and a half in Chase into a home is of value. So Don, next time you ride your bicycle on the trail, look and see those folks right there who are not being moved some significant distance to these homes. They're right there, right now.
Please, we'll give you a second in a minute.
Okay.
No, you do want to answer Mr. Hyde's question?
Yeah, I was going to answer some of his questions he had. Don, you brought up some valid points and I truly appreciate that. He really voices opinion and concern on light, nature, areas where these individuals can enjoy and have a good quality of life. I'm going to hold this up for you to see, Don. If you look at this green area for our tiny homes, these white squares represent each tiny home that will be placed in this area. And if you look in the middle, this is going to be designed as a courtyard. It's centralized, there's going to be picnic tables, trees, lots of room for sunshine because we have found that nature is very beneficial for mental health and we want to provide an awesome atmosphere for these individuals to be successful. I know you also mentioned something about placement, as like for their bike or their car. If you look up here at this diagram, each tiny home will have compartments for them to get around because we found that the population utilizes bicycles more than anything. So we're going to be providing this area for bicycles as well because we found that's the most beneficial for this community that we're going to serve. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Thank you.
Council, my name's Sean Rhino, and most of you recognize me from a different area that I'm usually here for. So this time I'm here on behalf of Mental Health America.
We're always glad to have you here, Sean.
And I just want to step here and try and explain what we're after and we bring, we think we bring to this project is around my office area, we have several homeless people that we've been trying to help out. And everybody knows I'm over on 13th Street. This just brings home to me that we can start this project and on a small basis with you guys' support and who knows where it goes. Because when you're talking homelessness, you're talking about joblessness, you're talking about everything. So Mental Health America helps these people get on their feet with, you know, it's housing. They're required to get a job, they're required to fulfill their little obligations, you know, per the requirements, just like our, what, 78 other units? So we're just expanding this into the neighborhoods. And I talked to the lady after the meeting yesterday and come to find out we know the same people. And she took my phone number and I expressed her concerns that everything will be okay. And all of our boards here, we're just here to support this project. I know you guys are thinking about it seriously and, you know, it's kind of exciting because not very often do we hear this. We discuss about the jail, we discuss about what we're going to do about it, maybe shrink the jail, do this, do that. Well, here's our opportunity to try to do something positive in a different light. So I appreciate your time.
President Crossan, council members, friends, thanks for the time tonight to be here to support the zoning request. I'm Brendan Kearns, County Commissioner, and I now serve as a co-chair for our local homeless coalition. As we are all aware, our homeless situation is growing more dire every day. When we had our last count in July, we counted approximately 566 homeless people within Vigo County. At our last homeless coalition, we realized that we missed 30 people. And it was one of those cases where it was right in front of our face, but we interact with these people so much, we completely overlook them. So realistically, our number is more accurate at about 600. On this beautiful evening, about 600 people will be considered homeless within Vigo County. As our weather turns and looking at how we're trending right now, that number's going to be so much higher when it gets cooler in the fall and absolutely devastating when it comes in the wintertime. So and once again, I made it that far on my notes and I've already lost track, so I'll just run with it real quick. I'm here tonight because I'm excited about Mental Health America's efforts. There are so many agencies within Vigo County that are doing what they can to improve our situation. Mental Health America had the vision to take lots in a depressed area, clean the area up, invest in new, unique, innovative housing, and provide it for people who are at the, in our utmost time of need. These are people that are dealing with mental health struggles and they have absolutely no income. They are the ones that we are seeing walking along the four-block radius of where we are right now, which is also where they'll be sleeping tonight. So for me, this is an extremely important initiative. It's going to be something that, with your support, I consider to be historic. If this does pass, whether it be tonight or it's your next meeting, we are being the innovators, we are being leaders within the state of Indiana to address this concern. And I do think, Jace, that your efforts will bring national attention to our efforts. So again, thank you very much for allowing me to be here. I know I interact with all of you now on the council in helping this initiative, and I think your vote of support tonight is going to be a massive step in taking care of this very bad situation and improving our quality of life within Terre Haute and Vigo County in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Council?
I think this is outstanding and this is an opportunity for Terre Haute to be a leader in this. And I was just curious, how much does each home cost to build? Is there an estimate on what it costs?
Well, our partnership with ISU currently, it's going to be extremely costly and efficient.
There's a microphone, otherwise you won't get on the tape.
I was just curious on what each home will be.
So Jeff mentioned a little bit about our partnering agency, ISU. Each semester, we're having the students build portions of these tiny homes and then a crane is going to be taking these from that warehouse at ISU and place them into the area that we have identified. So we do not have an expense, which is incredible. This is a great opportunity for the agency, for the community.
And for ISU.
And for ISU as well. Because the students are going to be getting exposure to experience and learning how to make these homes. Again, the students completely developed these, drew them out. It's just a great opportunity for everyone.
Well, when it comes, you get it told, I'd like you to come back and talk to us on the investment and the procedures and how it progresses. That'd be great.
Of course, we would love to.
Aye.
Counsel, presentation.
Jace, you had mentioned that some services, mental health services and others, will be two blocks away from this site. You're talking about the Sanian Clinic, right?
Well, we're talking about our agency, Unity House and Unity Village. So we are partnered with Hamilton Center and they provide mental health counseling. And we have a nurse sometimes come in as well to provide services to the tenants at the facilities. And sometimes they need substance abuse education and they need suicide prevention as well. So we have those services offered through Hamilton Center. We also have an education department. We have a diabetes group as well because a lot of our tenants have diabetes and they need certain education to take the insulin and learn what to eat and what not to eat. So those same services that we offer currently at our main office will be offered to this tiny home community as well.
It's great, I'm glad I asked because I draw on a connection that just sounds like doesn't exist.
Yeah, 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 we would love to offer this service to the tiny, and we will offer that because they will be a part of our facility.
Thanks, aye you.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say I think this is a great project. I've been following these projects over the last couple of years throughout the country. And when I read the stories, I acknowledge to myself that these communities are real leaders, they're leading the way in finding new solutions to deal with the issues of homelessness and mental health. And I talked with others about this issue, about this idea in the past, and a comment that comes up, oh, why can't we do it here in Terre Haute? And I'm just very, very happy to see that we are doing it here in Terre Haute. And it's great when we can say that our city is leading the way in our area and I'm really proud of this project, so.
I agree with you, Mr. Hyde, I appreciate that.
Yes, Congress.
First of all, thank you. I think it's a, I think it's a great project. I do have one question. What criteria do you use to decide when an occupant has met the requirements that need to be met for them to move on so someone else can move in?
So we do not have a certain period for our tenants to leave. This is considered their home. We don't believe in kicking someone out. If they, eventually, if they do get a job, if they get a steady income, they do have a certain amount. There's a scale and a whole system for us to determine how much they will pay, of course, for the utilities and whatnot. But we never would kick someone out because that would be their home.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Aye you.
Madam President, subject to further discussion, I would move that council take action on this item today.
It's been moved by Councilperson Elliott and seconded by Councilperson Morris that we take action on special ordinance 20. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We should take action?
One more question. If I could have Jeff come up, I think you might be better.
Thank you, Council.
To answer those. You know, this tiny home movement's been going on for over a decade. I've been following it and paying attention and wondered why not here? And so have a lot of my friends and development, developer types. I've had the conversation many times about what would it take via VR code to do a tiny homes project in Terre Haute? And my answer's always been, you know, our code doesn't really contemplate this, it's outdated. I applaud you all for figuring out how to thread the needle and get what all the steps are and then move this project through them to get it to fruition. But my question is, for my private developer friends who might want to embark on a project like this, are, what else, well, are we setting a precedent that makes it possible for a few empty lots on 7th Street to be ganged together and sprout a bunch of tiny houses? In the, not within the context of addressing an urgent need like homelessness, but within the larger context of just developing housing that somebody thinks they can make some money off of?
Sure. Well, I think the short answer is yes. And as I, to expand upon that then, as I made some statements earlier in other areas, these homes are being used by retirees or by students and not necessarily strictly for the homelessness need. We have an opportunity as this agency to do it, kind of going back to what Councilman Morris was going to, is the economics of it. It's very economic for us to do it with some grant raising and subsidizing and partnering. And so it's very economical for us. A private developer, he's obviously going to have that expense, but could he do it? Yes. And those individuals in those homes are going to be paying and either buying those homes or paying rent at a higher scale as well. But from a planning and zoning standpoint, city ordinance standpoint, could this be done going forward by a private developer? Certainly it could. They could follow the same process that we have followed to get to this point. Our code could be updated and added a section four specifically, tiny home-type projects. And that's really what they did. I talked with the city of Muncie and that's really what they did. Where we have an R1, an R2, an R3 zoning, they have an R1 through 4. Well, they added a 5 and a 6. So we could do the same thing, add a 4 and a 5 to put in specifications that maybe would make it a little easier, that we wouldn't have to seek some of the variances that we had to seek in this instance. Spell it out specifically what is allowed down to a, you know, minimum specificity. But they also stress that even at that, we're still setting standards and there are still always requests for variance, given some lot makeup or a different plan that they have in mind. So they still have the variance procedure in place, but they do make it a little bit easier by updating their code.
Right. And I think that's important and something for my fellow members of local government, not just this unit, but also at the area planning commission and other parts of county government to start grappling with and figuring out what those code updates might look like. So I'll stop. I thank you for that explanation and I just wanted to... I thank you for that explanation, and I just wanted to raise that issue so that we can all be thinking about that going forward. I yield.
In that regard, I would guess, for instance, one of the variances that you had to deal with was the parking, and that might be different for a different population of people that was on the same day, so.
Exactly.
Any other question by counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
There's no other questions or discussions, I proudly make a motion that we approve Special Ordinance 20, 2019.
It's been moved by Counselperson Nasser, seconded by Counselperson Nation, that we approve Special Ordinance 20, 2019. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to seeing those in my history.
Thank you.
Next item of business.
Special Ordinance 21, 2019, rezoning a property located at 2918, 2930, to 2940 Harding Avenue and 2941 South Third Street. Area planning is a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Madam President, this is the counsel. My name is Mr. Shagley, I'm here tonight representing the petitioners in this matter. As stated, this matter did go in front of area plan last night. It received a federal recommendation, a non-federal recommendation. In this process, as you know, it has to be advertised, and in the time it's been, as in time the sign's been up, we've not received any objections to this. The petitioners, Mr. and Mrs. Derrickson, are trying to kind of clean this up. It's currently zoned C6 on the portion that's on Third Street, and then there's several lots on Harding that is zoned R1. As you know, this is a former Texas Roadhouse property that has since moved further north. This property's been vacant for approximately three years. The petitioners are asking you tonight to rezone this all to C3, which would then allow for a possible hotel, restaurant, and bar in this location. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on Special Ordinance 21?
Yes, my name is Robert Hoopengartner, I live at 6682 West Manor. I own five houses on Harding Avenue, one end of the block to the other, on the west side of Harding. And I'm for development where the old Texas Roadhouse is, however, Harding Avenue was built, I don't know when, but it's to convey people from those houses on each side. And it certainly won't handle additional traffic from a proposed maybe hotel, bar, restaurant. When the Texas Roadhouse was at that location, in that parking lot that's there now, when people left the restaurant, they would just drive at will over all the sidewalks, curbs, because there's really no inner curb to contain the cars within the parking lot. And the Harding Avenue is two lanes, as you may be aware of, and there's a grass boulevard in the center. And the city street department, in order to combat the cars turning and going across both lanes there, they laid telephone poles horizontally in the center to prevent that. And there is an opportunity to turn from one direction to the other, a crossover. However, I had a home there at one time, and there's not enough room for the cars to make the turn without hitting the mailbox occasionally. It's very small, narrow streets. So Mr. Shagley, last evening at the area planning meeting, he had mentioned, or I'm sorry, not Mr. Shagley, but the area planning, that when they read the proposed ordinance, they indicated that they didn't really recommend approval of it, because the site plan was not complete. And of course, to build anything of that magnitude, you would need to incorporate entrance, exits, and such. However, he indicated, Mr. Shagley indicated, that'd be quite expensive for them to have those drawings done, and I tend to agree. So apparently, I don't know if there's a project proposed, or is this, as you indicated, just rezoning? And if it is a project proposed, I assume the architects, engineers, and would do drawings indicating site, how they do it should be, apparently. And if not, you know, I have a concern if that isn't going to be done. So.
If I could, Mr. Harman, could I? I apologize, your last name? It's Hoopengartner, Richard, Robert. As Robert mentioned, one of the comments in the staff report was, they made reference to the site plan. And then, to a surprise, a pretty extensive list of requirements within that site plan. We did submit a site plan based on the information that we had available. I was contacted by the petitioner to rezone this property, as previously stated, for a possible hotel, bar, restaurant. It is not the intention of the petitioner to build a hotel, bar, restaurant, it is the intention of the petitioner to sell their property to a developer for that project. As Robert mentioned, some of my comments last night was, because of, this is in a very early stage of this process, the idea to put those, to pay for those expenses, the site plan, the drainage plan, the landscaping, it was not economical, and it was not feasible in this particular situation, because the current petitioner will not be the developer of that property. One of the beauties about this system, and admittedly sometimes a frustrating part of the system, is, but a beneficial part of the system is, there are several steps to do these type of projects. And there are many different entities, whether it's area plan, whether it's the city council, whether it's the engineering department, whether it's the state, that have to approve these different parts for this project to go. At this particular stage, last night, that step was, is this property within the city parameters, is it, should it be rezoned C3? And the area plan department gave a federal recommendation, although they would like to have seen a little more detail on the site plan, they understand the situation, and they gave a federal recommendation. And then last night, it was in front of the city, excuse me, the area plan commission, and they too understood, as you know, the area plan commission's made up of appointed individuals, and a lot of them, if not all of them, are somehow tied to developing, whether they're developers themselves, or, for instance, Mr. Ennis, who's a city engineer and all that. And what that does is that brings a lot of talent to that commission for their review. And in that review, they found that, again, although the site plan wasn't as detailed as the staff had hoped, because of where this project is in the process, they still gave a federal recommendation, which then, as you know, brings it to you. And then your job, your responsibility is to, is this fit within the parameters of the code, and is this for that area a good fit as far as C3? And that's what we're looking at.
Thank you. Other members of public?
My name is Donald Hyde, I live at 1411 Apolos Street. I am real familiar with the land they're talking about, or change. This is probably one of the most, will be one of the most sought-after pieces of property in all of the city of Terre Haute. It sits on the south, no, down, no, the northwest corner of Margaret and Third, the highway. It has only one problem, is size. But as far as where it sits, there is no doubt that whatever business is built there will be successful. But I encourage you to remember this, how big the project is going to be will determine how much problems unseen will come about from it. But there is no doubt it's going to be so, it's just who and when. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment on Special Ordinance 21? Counsel?
Richard, we've talked many times over the years about site plans or lack thereof. I don't think that I've seen one that is, where the lack of a site plan is as, maybe bigger deal as the lack of a site plan for this one. And it's interesting to me to read the page plus findings and recommendations from the area planning department, and then to hear that they went ahead and gave you a favorable recommendation, that speaks well of your skills of moving these things through these bodies.
Thank you.
But focusing all the way down at the bottom on the recommendations, they say, they recommend a favorable on the request to rezonate C3 with the following conditions. The first one, a landscape plan to be submitted and approved by the city, which often happens after a rezoning has been given, and after a site plan has been presented, and after this body has done its thing. The second one, a completed and updated detailed site plan be submitted and approved. It doesn't say to whom or by whom.
Yeah, you know, that's the, I had opportunity to speak to a couple area plan commissioners last night, and we were talking about the site plan, and it was obviously a topic of discussion.
I bet.
And what's fascinating about the whole process is, one of them said, why do we even require a site plan?
So that people like me can geek out on it, and look at where the entrances are, and egresses are, and how the parking spaces, and see how many stories, how it's going to be.
But here's the funny thing, though, about it, if, funny, interesting thing about it is, so the site plan, let's say I submitted the most detailed site plan ever last night, when I filed this application, and at the meeting last night, they say, wow, Mr. Shagley, that's a great site plan. And I say, thank you. And then they approve it, and it comes to you, and because you like to geek out on these things, you say, Mr. Shagley, that's a phenomenal site plan. And I act humble and say, no, thanks. But the funny thing is, and then you approve it, and I thank you for that, and then I go back and I tell my client, it's been approved, and then they say, well, we've got to tweak that site plan, and we're going to do half the parking spots, because that's what code allows. Okay. They take it to the city, gets approved, they submit it to the state, gets approved. And really, again, that's why the site plan doesn't even, unfortunately, really matter, it's kind of just some guidance, based upon the information you have at that time, because it can change, because as I mentioned earlier, there's stages in this whole process. And, you know, like this wanting a landscape plan so early in the process is ridiculous, it's probably a little bit of a stretch, kind of ridiculous at this stage, because it's so early in the process. You know, a completed, updated, detailed site plan will have to be submitted by whoever develops this piece of property, to the proper agencies, and they will have to approve it. And if it doesn't meet the requirements that they fall under, whether it's distance from the center of the road, whether it's the width of the sidewalk, whether it's the height of the curb, or the amount of spots, or the distance to the next neighbor, that's the hurdles they're going to have to jump through with that particular department. And those will all have to be done for this to be a go. The drive cut will have to be, this is on a state highway, it'll have to be approved by the state. And that's not a fast process either. And that's why I was a little caught off guard, a little frustrated by the staff report in this request. You know, was this the best site plan I've ever submitted? Honestly, probably not, but that's. But based upon the information I had, which was, my client petitioner is hopeful that this is going to be sold and turned into a bar, restaurant, hotel type situation, that's the information I had, and that's what we had to go off of. All these requirements that they're requesting, and a lot more, will be met for this to be a go.
Yeah, as they are with every project that eventually gets built, whether it's approved by us, and then variances approved by the BZA, or whatever.
Yeah.
But I guess I'm mostly pointing out that you really, that this paperwork really doesn't give us the level of detail that we're accustomed to having to make our judgment on this project. And I get it, that things change after we've done our thing, but they change within the parameters that have already been set by the paperwork you give us there on the front end. You know, it's not, it doesn't become a whole other kind of use, usually. It couldn't, I grant that, but.
But this body doesn't determine whether or not 30 spots, 30 parking spots is correct, or if they're angled, or if they're straight.
That's BZA, right?
Right, well, that and the engineer's department. Right, this body determines whether or not it should be rezoned C3. And I would rather give you a site plan that doesn't have the detail, you know, that's accurate to what we have today, because I could have drawn up a building, parking spots, but that wasn't accurate, and I didn't want to provide something to you accurate, and then you find out later that, well, no, they're putting a hotel on the other side, or it's, you know, it's going to be an L, not a E, or, because I get to come back next week, and I don't want to, I don't want to do anything to dampen your thoughts on what I present to you. Based upon the information we have, this is, you know, we're trying to rezonate this for the potential to do those things.
Well, part of the calculus that I do, just speaking for myself, is looking at the site plan and trying to determine for myself if it's meeting the code, if it's reasonable, if you're going to build a six-story hotel and there doesn't appear to be enough space for the parking that's required, that's a red flag for me. You correctly point out that a curb cut onto US 41 is out of local hands, and that's, you know, I acknowledge that, and any development along 41 has to jump through those hoops. But the gentleman who got up and spoke about the Harding Avenue side of it, and what kind of entrance or egress might be provided there on the back or the west side, those are local decisions, and those are left up to the city engineering department and others to figure out. And that's, again, the kind of thing that I work at, and I listen to, when we have people from the public who are going to be impacted by these projects come and talk about them. Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be negative about this, what I'm pushing back against is a lack of information that we're being asked to make a decision with. I think that's a bad precedent, I think it's bad public policy, to have the system set up that everybody else is used to navigating, and then, in this case, oh, well, this is US 41, and these are acceptable uses within it, and it seems to be a big lot, and then just throw up our hand and say, well, do what you're going to do. I would like more detail. I yield.
Yep. I agree with everything that Mr. Nation said. My problem with this is, your comment is it's a possible hotel, bar, and restaurant. It also could be a possible live professional entertainment and dance thing. I mean, this C3 use gives you a pretty open book to what you want to put there, and I mean, and I have, I agree with Todd, it lacks a lot of specifics that I'm not comfortable with, I'm not comfortable, you know what, get somebody interested in the property, and then come to us for a rezoning, so we know exactly what's going to go there, and I don't have a problem with a C3. But I have a problem with not knowing for sure that that's what's going to be. But I have a problem with not knowing for sure that that's what's going to be there, or who, or how big. It's very, I don't know, I just, I agree with, with Mr. Nation, that there's just not enough information for me to vote on this. I yield.
Mr. President. Yes. I mean, I agree with Todd, oh, sorry, Councilwoman Nation.
Call him Todd.
Endors, I'm listening. And I've also asked, you know, I asked, I asked you earlier on, if, you know, who is developing this, what are they developing? I know our job is, for the zoning part, is, you know, does it qualify for that? Third Street Park, yes, it does qualify for that, but that property also runs back to the residential. And everybody knows my, that's my district, and I have somebody has a concern, I want to know, you know, how's this going to affect them? Because they've been there all their lives. So, again, I agree with Councilwoman Nation, I'd rather, you know, at least see some curb cutouts and everything. I'm not saying that, you know, I'd rather see this, this die tonight, I'd rather see a table, have us, bring us back some more information, better site plan, something, so we have something to go on. I yield.
I was just curious, what, why, why now? Why not when, what's the rush on rezoning it now? Why not when they've had a potential buyer?
I don't know, the, I was contacted by Mr. Derrickson, and he said, I need this rezoned to whatever's going to allow for a bar, or a hotel, bar, restaurant-type deal. And part of my process is, I contact area plan, and I say, here's the situation. I got this property, I don't know who, I don't have any of the details on the who, and I don't know if it's because I, I, over the course of doing this, that you get, if someone doesn't want to tell you. You know, I don't want to, you know, my job, my job was to get it rezoned for the potential of a bar, restaurant, and that's why I'm here tonight. You know, would I have loved to have had more details, but there may not have been, there may have been some details still due to, you know, there's a lot going on in our community, and there's a lot going on with forty-six, there's a, there's a casino hopefully coming, vote yes on two, oh, one and two, Dr. Hitler. You know, and with the convention center, I have, I don't know the details, but I suspect there's, there's a lot of outside eyes looking at Terre Haute, and what we're going to do in the next two months. And with that, I think you're going to see, we're going to need, we're going to need a lot more of this. And I apologize if I didn't have the details, I apologize if I had a more cited, or more detailed site plan, but, you know, I must point out, again, I could have provided all of that tonight, it could have changed tomorrow, and it wouldn't have mattered.
It wouldn't matter next time you come before us, your progress building would have been shot.
Exactly. And that's why I present to you what I knew. But again, you know, plans change, entrances change, size of buildings change, size of projects change. This, this council's determined whether or not a C three is a good fit for the piece of property.
I mean, we're probably not going to have the votes to vote on it tonight, but is one week going to make a difference next week for you to get the information that some of these council members want?
You know, if, if, to do what, to do what was requested by the area plan office, we would need six months, just to get the state approval on that one cut. And I, I'd have to talk to my client. I just, I mean, that's what makes that request so unrealistic, and so against the whole purpose of this, and that's developing our, our community. That is a huge roadblock to make that type of requirement on any potential project, because of the absolute, the expense, it's ridiculous, and the time.
Well, it just goes back to people's perception of speculative zoning.
Yeah, sure.
So, I yield.
One of the comment, my, my concern, although I do agree with Mr. Nation, I call you Mr. Nation, as time is. About the site plan, I'm just concerned, we don't know what it is. You're saying possible, we don't have any clue.
I get that, I understand.
And to me, I'm, I'm not comfortable rezoning a piece of property and not knowing what we're going to rezonate for. That's where I'm, I don't have a problem with a hotel, bar, and restaurant, but we're not sure. I yield.
I would just say that, while I, I do appreciate those requests that have more detail very much, that even if we had more detail, it is certainly possible that we could rezonate any piece of property at any request, and then for that deal to fall through for other reasons, and something else be developed there. So I do, I do understand, and I, and I guess I do fall in that category, I prefer not to be speculative in zoning, but in one sense, all zoning is speculative, and at least just the rezoning itself. Because once we've rezoned it, then it's eligible for whatever falls within that rezoning category, which may or may not be what we initially thought was going to be put there. I do just have one question regarding Mr. Hoopengartner's concern, not for you, sir, just for Mr. Shagley to, certainly you may comment on it if you like, but for Mr. Shagley to respond to. My understanding of that side of Harding Street, the, which would be the east side of Harding Street, if I'm correct, in that block, there, there are not currently any single-family residences there, even though some of it is still zoned, single-family residents. Is that correct? There aren't any houses still there?
Exactly.
Okay. And in several of those cases, there are already commercial parking in that block, is that correct? Yeah.
It's a mix to use from Third Street to sixty-three.
Right.
I mean, all the way from Margaret to Voorhees, and you could probably say even to Holman.
Well, I just look at the picture, and I just wanted to make sure I understood that further along there, but there is still housing on the west side of Harding, you know, right across the street.
If you, if you think about this, the Texas Roadhouse moved north onto the, deeper into the residential area. You know, I, obviously, everybody's got a different opinion about that, but that's growth. When you think about where we were a hundred years ago, where we were fifty years ago, where we were ten years ago, where we are now, where we're going to be in ten years, you know, you'd hope that whole area is commercial, because that's a sign of, of growth. You know, we don't know that. And again, I told, I truly understand the desire for the more detailed site plan. But the reality is, that site, I could have given that site plan and have whatever detail, and in six months, the casino thing doesn't go, and the convention doesn't go, and the referendum blows up, and we start shutting down schools, and all of a sudden, no one wants to come here, and they decide to build a, because it's a C three, build a little restaurant. You know, do we need to come back and get approval for that? We, that's, that's a, it's going to be C three, it has to fall then within that, that realm of C three. And right now, it's C six. With a move, I think, through the BZA, you could probably do the same, well, it'd be a little trickier. But, you know, the request is for this property to be a C three. And if the, if the council doesn't want to vote on that, I will attempt to obtain more information, I don't know what information I'll be able to, to get within a week. And we surely, again, to meet the requirements that was put in that staff report, we would need six months to a year to get approval by the state for those cuts on them. So hopefully I can come back before then.
This, this doesn't include the Wise Pie's property, correct?
No.
Has anybody talked to that, Wise, or whoever owns that property?
I'm not aware.
About the effect it might have on that property?
Um, I'm not, I'm not aware of anything.
Just, just wondering. Okay. Thank you. I yield.
One other question.
Amy, just a second. Sure. Just one quick thing, I know you pointed out that there's no houses, it's a long enough that it's all parking. There is houses on the other side, and when Texas Roadhouse was there, I had several complaints when they pull out of the back of there, like the gentleman was saying, they go across the grass, the light shining on the light, the houses that live right there, because when you pull out, it's like a beyond. So I was aware of those problems, cutting through the grass, trying to go either way to get out of there, and there's still a problem with the other restaurants there, with that happening now, and I'm fully aware of that. I yield.
There's one other fundamental question that this brings up, you know, a bar slash restaurant slash hotel, sounds like a pretty good development. And although architecture firms are really good at, you know, designing what a client wants, tells them that they want, I wonder how a big hotel, restaurant, bar development would look on this block, or on these two parcels that are separated by a public alley. Does your, do you know if, if the plan for this maybe hotel, restaurant, bar, contemplates an alley vacation, and spreading to the, and the building actually having a footprint that extends across the alley towards the west, towards Harding Avenue?
I don't have that answer, but you're sitting.
But you understand why I might ask that question, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And you understand how a site plan might shed light on whether that was being contemplated or not? Okay, thanks, I yield.
I think it looks like, well, somebody from the state said we're not probably going to take action on this.
So we just don't have to take action or anything, don't, nothing? And are we done? Then I move to a juror.
I move by Councilperson Azar, and by Councilperson Nation.
Like Charles with me, and you can't give me a favorable?
We are, and thank you.
I'll have three more scouts next week.